Anything different?
The Tuesday, April 6th, 2021 meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council is now called to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I find allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
In a non-COVID year, we typically would have more participation with an open podium option for our residents. We did actually have some people come this evening, however, just to let everyone else know that open podium is an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to Eden Prairie city government prior to each council meeting. Council meetings are typically held the first and the third Tuesday each month, and this open podium time is prior to that from 6:30 to 6:55 here in the council chambers. If you do wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office at 952-949-8412, by noon of the meeting date with your name, phone number, and subject matter, so we can be better prepared for you. If time does permit, after scheduled speakers are finished, the mayor will open the floor to unscheduled speakers. Open podium is not recorded or televised. If you have questions about open podium, please do contact the city manager's office. This evening, we are really pleased to have a report of the 2020 Quality of Life Survey, the results, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Getcho, so you can introduce our special speaker.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. That's correct. Every two years, around this time of the year, we get the results of our Quality of Life Community Survey, which is a statistically significant survey, random sampling of our residents on our core services, our services and our community characteristics. So, you know, I will say now that, following the meeting, we will provide the detailed report of every response that we received on our website. We do have a page right now on our website that has all of the detailed answers to all of our surveys going back to 2006. So tonight, for the last, I believe it's four surveys, we've worked with the National Research Center, NRC. Now, NRC Polco, you may be familiar with Polco because they're also a client, but now they're a combined company, but we use Polco for our community polling that we've done. So we have with us Jade Orocha from NRC to provide the council within, in the community with the results of the survey. You received a more detailed analysis, about an hour's worth in your workshop, but we also want to be able to provide a presentation at the regular council meeting.
Jade, welcome. Nobody can pronounce Rick Getcho's last name either, so don't take it personally. Sorry. Take it away.
No, he added on second shot.
Did he?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you very much for having me. I'm getting a little bit of an echo with my own voice, so I'll turn down volume there. So speak up if anyone wants to ask a question or make a comment, but I'm very happy to be here tonight to present the results of the 2020 Quality of Life Survey. Let me go ahead and share the screen. Trying to get it to go onto full screen mode. Not sure that's going to work.
Doesn't work like classic PowerPoint to click on the hourglass, or no?
Let's see here. Well, I have, um, let's see.
It's actually okay, I think, and you could just squeeze the slides on the left, and I think we can see okay.
Okay, sorry about that. I have the full screen mode open in another monitor, and it's just not cooperating with me, but as long as you all can see, I'll go ahead and dive in. So before I go into the summary of the survey results this year, I just wanted to cover methodology. As mentioned, this was a statistically valid mail survey effort, and this was the eighth iteration of a Quality of Life survey in Eden Prairie, the fourth that our company has conducted. Prior to that, this survey was a phone survey conducted by a different survey vendor. Since we have been conducting it for the last four iterations, this has been a mine mailed and online survey effort. NRC Polco conducted a scientific random survey of 2,000 randomly selected households in the city. Each of these randomly selected households received three mailings, a pre-notification postcard, or a resident that the survey would be coming in the mail, followed by two mailings of the survey itself. And with that survey bracket, residents also received a cover letter with instructions, the five-page survey itself, and a postage gate return envelope. The cover letter also contained a web link, so that residents could opt to take the survey online instead of returning it or form if they preferred to do so. From this mail survey effort, we received a total of 510 returned surveys, and after the majority of data collection was complete for the mail survey, a separate open participation online survey was made available to all residents in the city of Eden Prairie. This survey was promoted on the city website and via social media. From this open participation survey, we received an additional 859 responses. After conducting a thorough analysis of the disparities between the two datasets, we were able to determine that they were similar enough in the degree of response that we could, as in past years, combine the mail and online opt-in datasets for the purpose of this final report. So with that in mind, we received a grand total of 1,369 responses from residents, which provides a margin of error of plus or minus 3% for this report. And as is survey industry best practice, we weighted all of the responses to the census norms for the community. We use Census and American Community Survey data to do this, and this is another step in ensuring that your data were representative of your community and represented about demographics in the community as a whole. Finally, we provide benchmark comparisons by three different types of benchmarks. First is a comparison to our entire national database, and then we also do a comparison to two different peer community subsets. The first is all other Minnesota communities, and the second is other regional communities with similar populations to Eden Prairie. So that is an overview of our methodology. And from here on out, I will follow the key findings that we have provided in the body of the meeting report, the first which is Eden Prairie continues to be a highly desirable place to live and raise a family. Ninety-three percent of residents rated Eden Prairie as excellent or good as marks for quality of life, but this rating was higher than all three sets of benchmark comparisons and similar to ratings given in past years. Looking at ratings related to community quality, nine in 10 residents positively rated Eden Prairie as a place to live, as a place to work, and their neighborhood as a place to live. These ratings were similar to those given in previous years, except for the city as a place to work, which was lower in 2020 than in 2018, and were either similar to or higher than the benchmark comparisons. Eden Prairie as a place to raise children, 93% of residents gave this an excellent or good rating, and then 89% positively rated overall opportunities for education and enrichment in the community. Both of these ratings were also higher than all three sets of benchmark comparisons. Finally, there were two open-ended questions on the survey in which residents could write in a response. One of these was asked residents to write what they liked most about living in Eden Prairie. The fifth most commonly mentioned topic area in response to that question was related to either schools or education. Our second key finding, residents continue to rate safety-related aspects highly with a few primary concerns. Nine in 10 residents or more, 28% of residents positively rated fire services, fire department response time, citizen health care, EMS response time, police service, crime prevention, and emergency management. The latter three were higher than the national and regional benchmarks. And I do want to point out that for fire services, the only reason that this rating was not higher than the benchmark is that it's very difficult for any community to hire them benchmarks for purposes, simply because this service is so highly rated across all communities that we conduct surveys in. So fire services still being rated received very, very strong ratings, as I will cover in just a couple of slides. Ninety-two percent of residents gave excellent or good ratings to the overall safety in the community. This was similar to rating given the community way back to 2014 and higher than all three sets of benchmark comparisons. And then nine in 10 residents reported that they felt safe in all areas, including their neighborhood of Eden Prairie Mall, without parking lots, and other places. These feelings of safety around the urban streets since 2014 when these questions were first asked. And where benchmark compares are available, these ratings were similar or higher than averages in email spread. Residents were asked to rate a number of issues in the community as either minor, moderate, major, or extreme. So these ratings are combined total of those who rated each as moderate to even big problems. Thirty-four percent of residents felt that traffic speeding was a problem in the community, about Koreans and thought that was a proper crime or problem. And then roughly two in 10 rated drugs, youth crimes, stop sign violations, and eighteen effect. Most of these ratings were on par with those given in past years, except for drugs. Fewer residents in 2020 rated drugs as a problem than they did in 2018. And again, in reference to the open-ended questions, of the residents who chose to write in a response to these questions, 5% of those commented on the day that at least about a period, added a comment related to rising crime, etc. However, the other question asked residents focused about living in Perry. Of those respondents, 10% responded comment related to feeling safe in the community or safety-related services. Our next key finding, community parks, parkour, and natural environment continue to give value to the assets. Ninety-four percent of residents think Eden Prairie has an excellent work ethic overall natural environment. This rating was similar to those seen in past years, higher than three sets of benchmark comparisons. Looking at characteristics related to the environmental environment, all of these were higher than our benchmark comparisons. See at least 90% or more. Gave excellent or good ratings to all of the characters that you see on the right, and then 93% positively rated both all components of this city as well. And those writing that comment for what they liked most about the community, 34% wrote that comment related to their satisfaction with parks, trails, and recreation centers in Eden Prairie. While additional 7% positive on the property area related to open space or wildlife, this is a very popular and highly rated aspect of the community. Looking at the use of amenities related to natural environment and outdoors, most residents enjoy recreational opportunities in Eden Prairie. About 90% have this small learning parks, and this was an increase since 2018. About six in 10 residents have utilized the community, community center, while half of this time, and the bigger, the right-hand utilizing outdoor central foot and face area. As I mentioned already, the rate of residents using small neighbor parks increased into 20 as well as the intervention area. However, they were less likely to pick the community center. It is important to keep in mind that for 2020, of course, this, these rates of use should be, you define a different type of the COVID-19 pandemic, that residents likely be more likely to do more as long as they weren't closed lockdowns and such. So important context to keep in mind as you review all of these results. This is a summary slide of all parks and recreation-related amenities, and of the nine amenities that were listed here, all of those amenities were received ratings from eight and was four or more. Actually, most of them were rated by about nine in 10. Looking at parks and recreation-related services, again, nine in 10 roughly residents gave excellent work ethic ratings to park maintenance, trail maintenance, recreation centers, and services, as well as preservation of natural areas. And then, most of these received ratings higher than benchmark sets. There were a couple of these items for benchmark comparisons, and not a few alone. These ratings were consistent with ratings years. Our next key finding, residents continue to praise their civic services. Ninety-two percent of residents positively rate the overall quality of services in Eden Prairie, which was on par, things get further higher than all three sets of them. Looking at the valid services or taxes paid, important context here is that while this rating is lower than the overall rating for her quality of services, important to keep in mind that residents are answering this question while thinking about specifically taxes paid money that you're paying for the services that they are seeing. With that in mind, the averaging for this, I think, is quite a lot more in others. This is where we ask this question now, which rating is closer to half, about closer to five in 10. So with that in mind, and this rating is still higher than the benchmark comparisons and the same areas. Some of the top rated city services, more than 90% of residents, each of these positive ratings. So there were a total of three different service reviews that they responded, and of those 33 fell, received positive ratings by at least 90% of respondents. An additional 16 services were positively rated, at least eight responses, sorry, respondents. The lowest rated service out of these 33, traffic signal time, even for that item, it's still positive ratings, two-thirds responded. So when comparisons were ill for these services, almost all of them were higher or much higher than the benchmark sets. And finally, looking at the rate of contact with city employees, about six in 10 residents indicated that they had contacted the city service department 12 months prior to the survey, and of those residents, the highest frequency of contact reported, reported with police department, 22%, community center at 25%, and another 16% just print on information. Of those who had happened, was the city department, at least 91% indicated a good rating to each of the aspects of customer service, courtesy, knowledge, responsiveness, and follow-up, as well as a for all service. And that overall rating was higher than all sets of benchmark. And this is just a brief recap of our conclusions, and I'll give you two questions this time.
So, council, just to let the public know at home and in the audience tonight, that we did have this as a workshop downstairs and had an hour presentation, and had an opportunity to ask a lot of questions along the way and at the end. So if you have any additional questions now, it's fine. If you don't, that's fine, too, and I just wanted to explain to people that we've already Q and A'd in an open public meeting downstairs. So, council, any additional questions whatsoever? Can Mr. Getcho, anything final that you'd like to say?
Mayor, it's just, maybe I didn't mention this at the beginning, but if you remember during the many different public hearings we have on our city budget, we reflect back on, it's always a two-year process, putting a city budget together, and this is actually a big component of how we put together our citywide work plans and city goals and our budget. This is one important piece of feedback that we get that starts that two-year process. So it's always good timing to get these results, to dive deep into the results, and to maybe ask more questions and follow up, which we will do, and we have Polco to do that, but it also will help us build our '22 and '23 budget, following up on the residents' desires, I would say in this case, to maintain our service levels.
Great. Councilmember Nelson, you had a comment?
Yeah, I would like, you know, I guess I've said it before, because our services have always been high, but I really appreciate all of the employees that do interact so well with the community, have a high level of service and responsiveness to the community, and it's one of the best things that make people live here, because they do feel like they can come into City Hall, talk, figure out their problem, and go home happy. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'll just add that after 25 years on the city council and taking vote after vote to spend the taxpayers' money appropriately and with the guidance, really, of our taxpayers, it's nice to see that the results of our decision-making have been validated and confirmed by the people of Eden Prairie year after year in these surveys, where 90-plus percent of the people appreciate what we've done in terms of building out stellar fire and police departments and state-of-the-art park system. I said tonight, I guess it needs to be fact-checked. I've heard it, though, that we might have, I'm looking at our Parks and Rec director, but I think we might have more city-owned dedicated parkland in a city our size than any city our size in the state of Minnesota. Now, if that's not true, someone can fact-check me, but we've done a really great job of purchasing parkland and building it out and giving really amenities to the people of Eden Prairie. So nice to see it validated in a survey like this. All right. Mr. Getcho, we have Sun Current Reader's Choice Awards.
Thank you, Mayor. I will introduce our Parks and Recreation Director, who you were just mentioning, to follow up on this award.
Thank you, Your Honor. Councilmembers, we have had the opportunity on a yearly basis to be a part of the Sun newspaper's annual survey, and they asked people, they're readers, they call them the Reader's Choice Awards, and they asked for their feedback on what they then called the best of. And we're fortunate enough to be recognized for three different categories, and tonight, I would tell you, I think we have some of the best of in terms of our team members here tonight with our Parks and Natural Resources Manager, Matt Born. He's going to tell you about one of those. And then our Community Center Manager, Valerie Verley, and then she'll tell you about the other two. Matt and Valerie have been with us for quite some time now. They both came to our organization as supervisors. That was their first full-time position with us, and due to their great success and capabilities, when the opportunity arose, we promoted them to managers, and we're lucky to have this quality of professional within our organization and in our city, and I feel really fortunate to be able to work with these two on a, really on a daily basis. So I'm going to turn it over to Matt, and then after he's done, Valerie will come in, and if you have any questions, all three of us are here to help with those.
All right, Mayor, council members, thanks for having me today. So the first award that we're going to accept or present to the council here is the best, I want to get the wording right, best outdoor water park or splash pad. So this is for Round Lake Park, a park that I'm sure quite a few of you have realized has been a staple inside or within Eden Prairie for quite a while. It's been one of our four community parks, home to Fourth of July, a lot of other events, schooner days, corn feed, a lot of really good community events that we're able to bring a lot of people together within that park, really has been, like I said, a staple in Eden Prairie for quite a while. But then, kind of towards the late 90s, early 2000s, some of you may remember, we're having quite a bit of issues with water quality and stuff in the lake. The beach was constantly closed down. There was a real need for finding an amenity that we could always rely on, still give you that beach feel, kind of that water activity, and that's when, in 2012, we redid the splash pad and created, like I said, that more reliable area that people could still go hang out in the sand, play in the beach, but then still have that water feature and be able to play in the water. Luckily, in recent years, after a lot of water improvement projects, we haven't seen the number of shutdowns of the beach that the lake has been able to stay open, but still, that amenity at Round Lake Park, we hear constantly of how many families love just going, spending the day, bringing a lunch, going, and with the playgrounds on each side and the splash pad in the middle, how nice it is to have that amenity within our city. So we're happy to accept the best outdoor splash pad or water park, and hopefully continue to have some good years with the beach, that we'll be able to keep that open as well, but at least now, we know we'll always have that splash pad as somewhere kids can go and play and cool off on a hot summer day.
Thanks, Matt.
Okay, so next we have Best Recreation Center is another Sun Current Award that we received. This is actually our sixth year receiving this award, so we're pretty proud of that. That stems back right about, right around the time of our most recent expansion. So for those of you that don't know, we're open from 5:30 a.m. in the morning until 10:00 at night, so we see the before-work crowd, the after-work crowd, we see senior classes, childcare camps, fitness classes throughout the day. We kind of pride ourselves in saying we serve everybody from ages zero to 100, and really have seen all of those ages at our facility, and it's pretty cool, the families and the true community that happens because of it. So as you know, in 2008, we had an expansion, and we saw numbers jump up from there for both membership and a fitness expansion, offering about 200-plus classes a week, and then we saw that jump again in 2016, when we had the aquatic facility expansion, which actually was also recognized in our awards. But as you can see, we have quite the run of amenities at the community center. With the expansion pieces, we've been able to build out between aquatics and fitness, certainly the ice arena and the different amenities, we've been able to get creative with over the years. So then the last and final award is Best Indoor Water Park. This is the third year that we've been recognized for Best Indoor Water Park since its inception in 2016, and the water park specifically was recognized for its zero-depth entry, family-friendly, kid-friendly, but also the water temperature is 86 degrees typically most days. It's our warmest body of water, so it's very friendly to seniors or people with ailments or injuries that they're recovering from. We see a lot of that, too. So it really is that true mission we serve, that zero-to-100 age group is really able to utilize that pool, even though they're not all using to utilize that pool, even though they're not all using the water features or the slides and things of that nature. But certainly a prized piece of our aquatics expansion that continues to serve the community really well and gets us through a lot of positive feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. Thank both of you for coming in this evening, and we just are so proud all the time of our staff and think we have the best, well, we do. We have the best staff in the, okay, you can fact-check me on this. We have the best staff in the state of Minnesota at any city our size. I'm so proud of that. So thank you. You all are so representative of the best. And Jay, thank you also for your leadership. Okay, I'm thanking everybody. Rick, thank you also. Okay, no, I mean all that, you know that. All right. Anything else, Mr. Gettrill? Before we move through the--
No, Mayor, not until the agenda approval.
Great. So with the agenda, I always ask if Councilmembers have any items that they wish to add, anything, any of you? And I'm assuming Mr., oh, do you, no, but I'm assuming Mr. Gettrill does.
I just, I have a couple clarifications on the consent agenda. So I want to mention first that when the packet went out, between the weekend and today, one item has been removed. So you'll see the consent calendar now goes through O. So use the annotated agenda in front of you. The one item that was removed, it will come back at a later date, is related to property acquisitions on the 70th Street project. So that was removed, just completely removed.
You're saying the white sheet in front of us is accurate.
Yeah, yeah, you want to go through O. Yep, and then, real quick, too, the golden rod is for Item D, and that's simply because we had to change some of the language and the resolution between when the packet went out and tonight. And that's our water meter changeout project. We will be issuing debt for that at a later date, but as you know, we're taking on a very aggressive water meter replacement program.
Excellent. Council, anything else? So is there, let's see, do we need to have just a motion to approve as-is for us, A to O? I'm sorry, that's--
Yeah, I got ahead, Barry.
I'm moving ahead of myself, too. Let's get back to just the agenda as-is on this white sheet. All right, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda as-is.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Freyberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Toomey?
Aye.
Mayor Case?
Aye.
PG's here, but--
Oh, and PG is online tonight, so call him as well.
I'm sorry.
Councilmember Norrion is not in the video.
He's here tonight, too. He's just virtual.
Oh, okay, sorry.
You got to include him all the time. We'll get you included here, PG.
Councilmember Norrion?
Aye.
All right. Thank you so much. Council, any issues or questions about or corrections on either the council workshop minutes from Tuesday, March 16th, or the council meeting that same night? If not, could I have a motion to approve both of them?
Move to approve the following city council minutes. The council workshop held Tuesday, March 16, 2021. City council meeting held Tuesday, March 16, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, including PG.
Councilmember Freyberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Norrion?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Toomey?
Aye.
Mayor Case?
Aye.
All right. So the consent calendar is A to O, as stated in the white sheet before you. So are there any items to pull temporarily or to ask questions about, anybody? I just want to call out that because we've been asking about body cameras for police officers, that this consent calendar does include approval of the actual purchase of them. So just ever so quickly, do we know a guess at a date that our officers in Eden Prairie will actually be wearing them? Do we have a guess at that, Chief? It can be just a guess, but just a sense.
Thanks, Mayor. We predict it'll be about eight to 10 weeks before we take delivery.
So we're looking at June to July, in that range, the officers in Eden Prairie will be camera-ready--
That's our goal.
--and have it installed and using them. Excellent, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thanks for all your work with us moving ahead. I think with everything going on in our nation, this is occurring at police departments across the country, so I want to make sure Eden Prairie is in that group. All right, with that, is there a motion to approve Items A to O on the consent calendar?
I'll move approval of Items A through O on the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'm checking that.
You can give that to anyone you want. Your call. So we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Freyberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Norrion?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Toomey?
Aye.
Mayor Case?
Aye.
All right. This evening, we have two public hearings. The first, actually, yes, two. The first one's a little bit perfunctory, but I'm really glad to have it publicized as well because those of us that do so love the Smith Cafe and really appreciate the fact that we have people, residents of our own city, that are so interested in managing and running this business inside a city-owned historic home. So there is, anytime something occurs with a heritage preservation site that is listed within the certified local government, some, I won't go into great educational detail here, but many, many years ago in the '90s, we chose, the city council chose, to actually hand off a little bit of its responsibility into something called the CLG Certified Local Governments, a federal law. And with that, then our heritage homes have to go through approval of the Heritage Preservation Commission, and then it comes before the council for final approval. So this has gone through the HPC, and now it's to us. Mr. Gettrill, anything else?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. That's a good description of our process, that this is a designated heritage preservation site. And the operators of the business, the Smith Coffee business, the Schusters, are planning on a fence construction that needs to receive a certificate of appropriateness that was approved unanimously at the Heritage Preservation Commission meeting, and now they're here at the city council level where we do need to hold a public hearing on this item, and then the council would take action. I see Alex Schuster in the audience, and I know that he has a few comments to make as he did at the Heritage Preservation Meeting to provide a little bit of an overview on their project, and I'm sure to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Alex?
Hi, Council. Thanks for your time this evening.
Just pull the mic up a little bit.
Does that work better?
Yes.
Should I take the mask off?
It's up to you, but I think we need some help from the back room, too, maybe to up the volume.
Okay. I have a presentation up here. Just to quickly introduce myself, my name is Alex Schuster, and I am the son of Ann Schuster, who we have worked with the city as the tenants of the property at the Smith-Douglas Morehouse for the last 15 years. We've been, worked as a partnership with the city, and here's another project to kind of work together on. We would like to add a fence to the backyard. If you go to the next slide, I can show you the area we would like to fence in. The reason we like to fence in this part of the yard is to serve wine and beer and to make additional use of the backyard of the property. The pandemic restrictions have kind of taught us that this outdoor space can be a great asset to us, and we think a fence will be a good long-term asset to the building. As you educated the room earlier, we've been working with Beth Novak Krebs at Planning since January about what's required to add a fence to this part of the property, and she determined that a certificate of appropriateness would be needed. And the HPC has decided that it's appropriate and that we can move forward. If you go to the next slide, this is a general map of the fence we're proposing. It's really two fencing projects. The black line that runs along the west side, north side, and east side would be a four-foot black metal iron fence. And then the other part would be some six-foot cedar fencing that's in kind of a golden rod color. And this would be to screen some mechanical equipment along the building.
So Alex, will you enter this area from inside the building? Is that the security feature to it, or?
No, you actually will enter the area through that eight-foot gate, which is between the parking lot and the cafe. So it'll be entered from the outside.
So in terms of serving alcohol, is there a control feature to it, or like, or just simply this is an area you can purchase your alcohol inside?
We've been told that we can purchase it at the window and then carry it back.
Carry it back, okay.
Yep. Are there any other questions?
Council?
I can, just, you know, this is really, is it an issue with the historical property is kind of why we're here, and we've found that it doesn't, it doesn't require us to alter historical space. It can be removed at a later date, which is when you're adding a modern element, and it doesn't, you know, alter the function of the building in a nonhistorical way.
Sure.
That's what we like to do. Thank you for your time.
You bet. And for everyone else, again, the HPC has, in a way, done the hard work because they've, if they've approved it, it's their responsibility, really, to oversee for us, our city-owned historic properties. So it's a little bit perfunctory, but it is a public hearing. So with that, I'd like to open up to anyone in the audience. Is there anyone that wishes to address the council on this public hearing issued this evening, the fence up at the Smith Cafe? Yes, please, come forward. Name and address?
Hi, I'm Karen Malmstern, and I live next to the Smith property on the north side. I'm the first house on Lincoln Lane, and we've been there for 37 years. And we support the Smith adventure. We love the space, the open space, and we do support the fencing.
Nice.
Anyways, and we do, we do enjoy our neighbors, and, you know, we'll talk to them from time to time if we have anything. Thanks.
Okay, thank you for coming in. That was nice of you to support them. Anybody else? All right, Council, any further discussion from any of you, or any, some of, one of you ready to make a motion? You can close the public hearing and move right into the next part of the motion.
Move to a close of public hearing and adopt the findings of the fact and approve Certificate of Appropriateness 2021-01-03-2 for the installation of fencing around the backyard area and the mechanicals at the Smith Douglas Morehouse.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Freyberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Norrion?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Toomey?
Aye.
Mayor Case?
Aye.
All right, our second public hearing is Chase Bank. Mr. Gettrill?
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmembers. You may be familiar with the Baker Square Building at the intersection of Plaza Drive and Prairie Center Drive, has been vacant for some time. We have a proposal where the applicant is requesting to construct a 3,300-square-foot single-story Chase Bank building with a drive-thru at this location. And the applicant, the applicant, I believe, is on, there he is, with the camera on. The applicant is here virtually to provide a presentation on their project and their plans for the construction of the bank, and this is, requires a resolution for a PUD and directing staff to prepare a development agreement, which obviously would then come back for a second reading at a later date. The applicant is here to provide a presentation, as I said, and staff and the applicant could answer any questions the council or the public have. So Brian, I believe it is, the floor is yours.
Very good.
Brian, there you go.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. We're excited here to be here tonight to present this Chase Bank project. Can I just get confirmation that you're able to see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent. So the project site that we're looking at for the proposed Chase Bank is located at 928 Prairie Center Drive. It's the former Baker Square restaurant site. It's located just west of the Menards and just east of the ones. As you can see, this is the proposed site plan for the Chase Bank site. The project will be a demolition of the existing Baker Square building and construction of a new, packed-up, one-story Chase Bank. There will be parking on both the south and north sides of the building with two customer rest fields and join to the bank branch. There is a proposed trash enclosure on the east side of the building, along with a drive-thru for APN. The site will provide increased pedestrian circulation into the development in the adjacent sites. Part of the project will be connected and extending to the public sidewalk along Plaza Drive, extending the sidewalk into the development, allowing the public to access both the bank branch, as well as there will be a pedestrian connection to the adjacent Starbucks site to the east. Since the committee meeting, we received some feedback at meeting that putting proper rates and public reading, pedestrian path would, these two are here, similar to with the overdeveloped and less. Additionally, since the last planning commission meeting, we removed one parking stall, request planning commission, increasing green space in the north corner of the building, and we've added one more street and application. As part of the project, will be restriking a portion of the parking on the adjacent subject to the normal, and that will be converted of the current, you know, 25% of the square. There are some proposed parking spaces located on the southern elevation and entry to the Moving on to the drainage, just for the site. Stormwater will be collected from the property and routed to an underground stormwater drainage system that will be located along the southern elevation of the building, that stormwater underground system will be designed to accommodate for rainwater reuse. The system will be inundated with water, and the water will be then reused to irrigate the site and all the other spaces. This project has been worked through with your credit group to manage both ownership and certain rate of volume and quality of the post-development. Here's a Smith of landscape plan for the site. The existing landscape buffer along Plaza Drive will largely remain the existing vegetation. Additionally, there will be some proposed trees along the ATM on the east side, as well as two trees on the side. There will be foundation connecting so on the building. And as I mentioned before, those areas will be irrigated with the ground stormwater. With that, I'll show a highlight, the sustainability aspect of in our previous slides. First is the underground stormwater management system. It will manage stormwater from the site and irrigate the onsite landscape purpose. New village lighting will be installed in the area. The site's going to provide improved bicycle and pedestrian connectivity compared to the existing Baker Square site, and there will be additional land gate that's not currently there today. I'll now turn it over to Dr. Ryan, the architect of the project, through building plan and patients. through building plan and patients.
It looks like you're coming on and then turning off. Are you, can you speak or are you muted?
Yeah, it's muted.
No, we're not hearing anything. Brian, do you just want to take it and run it through?
Sure. So this is the building footprint for the Chase Bank branch. As I mentioned before, there is a two, best of the increase on the north and the south with the trash enclosure reconnect to the building now. Here are the north and south elevations of the building. South elevation will be the one that is Plaza Drive. You can see the trash in the building. And here are the elevations for both the east and west as well as the APM elevation that we're faced Plaza Drive. So what does that stand for? Any questions that I can ask?
Councilmember Toomey, I know that you spoke with me earlier about a question you had on a tree. If you want to raise that, go ahead.
I did have a question on the tree. However, I was informed that you are planting more trees rather than taking one away. So thank you for that. But I do have another question. Will there be any charging stations for electric vehicles in your parking plan?
At this point, we are not proposing any electrical vehicle charging stations and prioritize the other sustainability items in coordination with city staff, ownership staff.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Counsel? Councilmember Nelson?
What, when you're under construction, taking down the one building, putting up the other, will there still be vehicle access into the whole rest of the center there? As well as at least some place where there's pedestrian access into it?
There will be. Throughout construction, there will be access to the adjacent businesses, and it'll be coordinated with contractor and the adjacent businesses to make sure that construction and access is done to an acceptable level in coordination with the adjacent businesses.
I also do like your use of runoff water to irrigate the plants. That's, that's a nice touch for the building, and hopefully more buildings will start doing that. So it's a good start. Thank you.
Counsel, anything else? You can always ask if you wish, or did you wish to now? After we close the public hearing, if you wish. Mr. Gettle, anything before I open it up to the public?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Then this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on the Chase Bank project? So seen none. Counsel, was there somebody that would make the motion to close the public hearing and go ahead and move the entire motion?
I'll make the motion. I'll move ahead and close the public hearing and adopt a resolution for a planned unit development concept review on .61 acres and approve the first reading of the ordinance for a planned unit development district review with waivers on .61 acres and direct staff to prepare a development agreement, incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Norrion?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Toomey?
Aye.
Mayor Case?
Aye. Passes unanimously. Brian, welcome to the neighborhood up there. Appreciate you being here. Look forward to the project being completed. Thanks for coming this evening. Okay, counsel, payment of claims. Any items you wish to just ask a question about of staff? It's all the expenses and the checks cut over the last, well, time period since our last meeting. Is there a motion then to approve the payment of claims as submitted?
I'll make a motion for approval of payment of claims as submitted.
Sir, second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Norrion?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Toomey?
Aye.
Mayor Case?
Aye. All right, no reports of council members. Moving on to report of Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Gettle.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll introduce our Parks and Recreation Director. As he's making his way forward, he'll probably mention that this presentation he's giving is a follow-up to some council discussion we had regarding our capital improvement planning.
All right, busy night for you.
It is, thank you. Your Honor, councilmembers, from time to time, we're talking to you about recreation participation, especially sport participation as it pertains to some of the amenities that we're either adding, subtracting, or modifying. And the mayor had asked to come back and show you what some of those are from a community-wide basis. And so, as you know, we work with a lot of different sports, some of them directly, where we put them on, where we may support the youth athletic associations. And so it's important for us to keep track of where they're heading so we can, in our terminology, right-size some of our facilities and the programs that we're offering. And so what we're going to do tonight is walk you through a report that we've put together. We do have many years of history that we've been keeping, both in our annual reports. But we also work with the school district to understand some of their trends too, because some of this can be about population. Some of it can be about recent immigrant populations that may have some interest in other sports that may not be traditional to us and how we can move that forward. So I'll ask Doug if we could put the PowerPoint up and go to the next slide then. So we're hoping that this also serves as a good document. As you know, we are working on our system plan and our master plan for our park system and our department going forward. And so this will be a section in that. And we'll be able to, not just in our annual report, but in this particular report, be able to document those numbers and participation trends going forward. We've also shared this with the Parks Commission. We've also shared this with some of our youth athletic association volunteers and received some of the input from them too. And as I mentioned before, it helps us right-size some of our facilities. And when you think about baseball, for example, we have that example with baseball and softball and moving some of those around to get to the right sizes, the right amount of them. The Cummins Grill fields that we know now as baseball fields used to be adult softball fields, became too short. Riley softball fields got longer. We used to have more fields at, at Round Lake Park, and we made those less fields so that they could be bigger to today's standards. So that's just one example how over time we've been working through some of the trends that we've seen coming. And in a, in a capital improvement plan, it doesn't, it isn't something that we just come up with a year before. So we need to be able to understand these. The one thing that I will tell you is that all results are local and all the trends are local. So right now, what we're experiencing here in Eden Prairie and what we have in the last five years for hockey participation, that is just the opposite in a community 20 miles north of us. And so sometimes it's helpful to look at national trends, helpful to look at state trends. But we try to also bring it back to what has been happening here and where do we think it's going to be going? And so that's important to understand too. You might hear on the six o'clock news that a certain sport is just blossoming in some area. That might not be the case here. It might get here before us. As we know with fashion and trends on the West Coast, East Coast, there's some of those sports that it's done the same thing. Lacrosse on the East Coast made its way here. And so some of it, we get some advanced warning on as well. So I'll ask Doug for the next. So as I introduced you to Valerie and to Matt tonight, I also get to introduce you to Doug. And as you heard with Matt and Val, whenever we get a chance, we, we are having an opportunity to hire some pretty amazing, talented people. And they get to grow up in our system when they're ready and are experienced, and we have an opportunity. And that's definitely also the case with Doug Tucker. And Doug, we, we plucked him out of the elementary school system here in Eden Prairie. That's how long he has been in our system. And graduated from Eden Prairie High School, went all the way off to college, came back, did his internship with us. First full-time position with us was working at the senior center for several years. And then when the adult athletics position became open, we promoted Doug to that position as well. Doug also works closely with our youth athletic association. So as they need field schedules and maintain, he's their main contact. So he has a great feel both for youth and adult athletics. But not to forget, there are many other people in our department that are experts in their areas. There are areas of aquatics, there are areas of fitness, the areas of sports that we're teaching classes in. And so Doug worked with them as well to bring this data together and to be able to communicate it back to the council and to other people that might be interested in hearing about it. So I'm going to turn this over to Doug. He'll walk you through how we collected it and give you some idea of where we have seen things or where we think that they're heading in the future. And again, that will help us inform the capital improvement program and how we propose things to you in the future.
Yeah, first off, thank you, Mayor Case and counsel, for inviting me here to speak this evening. Jay mentioned it quite nicely. I'm going to give an overview of who contributed to this report, what sources were used for the report. And then I'll go over a few slides which detail all the sports that were analyzed. And I'll just give some selected highlights and trends that I thought were surprising and interesting. So as Jay mentioned, our recreation supervisors were tasked with analyzing the sports that they work with directly. So our fitness center supervisor reported out on fitness trends. Our ice arena supervisor reported on figure skating and ice hockey. And there's just a lot of institutional knowledge from city staff. And this was a good opportunity to put that knowledge down on paper. We pulled our data a lot from our annual reports, our participation counts, our strategic master plans, and a lot of other documents that we've worked with over the years. So in a lot of ways, this is a consolidation of that information and put together in one place. We also got input from the high school athletic department. One of their representatives gave us a great overview of what's going on here locally at the high school level. Not only were local trends examined, but also state trends and national trends as well. So I believe you've all been provided with the sport trend report. And you'll see an overview of all of those sports kind of as an at-a-glance. And within the report, it goes into a more in-depth analysis of these sports. So at this at-a-glance page, we've used directional arrows to kind of show you where we feel the trends have been for the past five years and where we think they might be going in the next five years. So I'm just going to run down this list and just mention a few highlights, sports specific of things that I found to be interesting. And the first would be badminton. That's a sport that typically you associate with maybe playing in the backyard, at a barbecue. But it turns out that competitive badminton is a thing in our community. Eden Prairie High School has a badminton club with over 100 participants. So that was one that really stood out to me. Youth baseball, there has been a slight decline in participation in youth baseball over the years. And as Jay mentioned, a lot of this can be due perhaps to changing demographics and differences in school enrollment. We are seeing a lot of demand for our full-sized baseball fields and particularly from adult baseball groups, sometimes referred to as town ball. Here in Eden Prairie, we host three town ball teams that rent fields from us over at Miller Park. And as a field rental coordinator with the city, I have seen a lot more demand for adult groups trying to rent baseball fields. Going down here, one of the sports was cricket. That is a sport that is really emerging in our community. If you drive by on a summer night, you might see a local resident groups on one of the ball fields playing cricket. And I'm pleased to say that a few years ago now, we were able to repurpose a field over at Nesbit Park to be a dedicated cricket field or pitch, as they call it. So it was really nice to give this group their own dedicated field that it's not shared with another group or association. I do work with these groups, cricket groups, if they call me, to help guide them to fields that they can use for their sport that won't interfere with, you know, our youth associations or city programming. All right, yeah, our next slide here, fitness. As you can imagine, due to the pandemic, there's been a great increase in demand for virtual fitness classes. And our community center has responded appropriately by offering our own virtual fitness classes. I think we're up to around 25 virtual classes a week. I also believe that they have altered some of their membership offerings where you can get a virtual-only membership if you're not quite ready to work out physically within the facility. The next sport is football. I think it's been pretty well-known that participation in youth football has been declining over the years, particularly the last 15 or 20 years. And that can be most attributed to the increased awareness of injuries, specifically concussions. So our youth association has responded. They're offering more flag football leagues for younger age groups. They're starting that, you know, tackling at a later age, and there's more emphasis on technique, especially in regards to blocking or tackling. So you could argue that playing football now is as safe as it's ever been over the years. Youth hockey, there's been a slight decrease in the participation on the boys' side. That's been offset by increased participation on the girls' side. And I'll also make a quick little mention that the boys won state over the weekend. So just wanted to say congratulations to the boys for taking home state. Pickleball, very popular within our community. I think we're all pretty well aware of that. You drive down Pioneer Trail any nice night, and you'll see those courts packed over there. So that sport is still thriving within our community. I'll go a little more in-depth on this page here. Soccer is still a very popular sport within our community. Eden Prairie is home to two youth soccer organizations. One is our Eden Prairie Soccer Association, which is more of the in-house program. Everybody can sign up and play. And also our soccer club, which is more of that traveling program, more skill development. Getting into softball here. So adult slow pitch softball, the leagues that are offered through parks and rec that you'll see over at Round Lake Park or Lake Riley, the number of those teams has been decreasing over the years. And that trend is not just local, but it's at the state and national level. We are fortunate here in Eden Prairie to still have a good number of teams and a very quality league offering. And what we found is that the teams that are playing are our core users, those groups that want to play more games and have longer seasons. And we've been able to provide that by offering more doubleheader leagues and longer seasons. Youth fast pitch, so that's the girls' program, our Eden Prairie-based association. They have seen a slight decrease in numbers over the years. And I've actually had a conversation today with contact within the association who made me aware of a partnership with our youth baseball association. Those two groups are getting together to offer a rookie league camp, which is targeting those players at the youngest levels. And I was told that this is the first ever partnership between youth baseball and youth fast pitch. So it was great to see those organizations coming together for that common cause of recruiting more players. Softball, slow pitch senior softball is something that's really taken off. A lot of those teams that were playing competitively in adult leagues in the 90s and early 2000s, they are now playing in their own senior-specific leagues. And Eden Prairie, we actually partner with the West Metro Senior Softball League. They rent fields from us over at Round Lake Park on Tuesday and Thursday mornings. So they pay us a rental fee to use the space, maintain the fields. So they pay us a rental fee to use the space, maintain the fields, and they organize their own leagues. So it's really been a win-win. We're able to offer more athletic opportunities for seniors and also get great utilization of those fields over at Round Lake Park that went, underwent, I should say, reservations a few years ago. Swimming lessons and also tennis lessons, those are just, continue to rise. It seems that we have full classes for every swimming and tennis offering that we can provide. And then the last sport I'll touch on here is volleyball. So I've seen a lot of increased participation in volleyball at the youth level, in the adult leagues that I administer, and particularly with boys' volleyball. As Jay mentioned, some sports that are popular on the East Coast are starting to make their way here to the Midwest, and boys' volleyball is one of those sports. It's currently a club sport, but there is lobbying going on at the state level with the high school league to make that a officially sanctioned varsity sport. So don't be surprised if you see varsity boys' volleyball in the future. And I will turn it back to Jay.
So as you can see, there's quite a bit of participation in a variety of sports in our community, which is, which is great to see. We sometimes hear about sports specialization and kids that only play that one sport, and it doesn't always work out to be that great of a deal at the end of the, kind of their participation. And so hopefully they have an opportunity to play at all different levels, to be able to participate in things that they're just interested in and not necessarily need to be super, super competitive. So we do look to use this to go forward, whether it's right-sizing, whether it's talking about new facilities coming forward. And certainly Doug and I are available to answer any questions that you might have.
The only thought that, question that came to my mind was simply, right off the top of your head, does it drive any great need for structural changes in the short term? Or do we have infrastructure in place and this is just changing the way we program it?
Yes, I mean, we've been doing it incrementally, and I think that example that I use for baseball, but also when you think about pickleball. We started out with dipping our toes in with a couple locations, and we used lines that we could put on the tennis court before we went to all the way to a dedicated court and then all the way to what we have at both Franlow is very dedicated high-level courts and same way at Starling Lake, too. And so as we think about going forward in some of our changes, not all of them need to be large capital improvement program changes. So some of it actually leads us back to our policies and procedures. We, as a city, are pretty Eden Prairie-centered. We don't rent to many people that aren't within our community. We don't bring in a lot of groups that, you know, to us, renting to somebody outside of our community is only if it helps people in our community have a closer location. Because the wear and tear that you can put on fields and facilities, we want to reserve that for our residents. But, so some of our policies over the years have been set up to be really exclusive. You need to have a high percentage of residents in your volunteer organization. You need to be an established nonprofit. Well, when you think about when cricket started coming our way, there's no way that they could do that. And so we've bent some of those policies and we've called it incubating. And so we've worked with the local cricket groups to say, for a few years, we're going to not be so concerned that you're 100% Eden Prairie, because we know you would never even be able to get a team or a league to happen that way. And so I think having that flexibility sometimes in our policies until that sport grows and we understand it better, it's having that level of flexibility and being able to partner and work with some of those groups, and then they, they do become something. Or sometimes they don't get enough and they might have to collaborate as a regional opportunity too. So, you know, we've really right-sized, when you think about aquatics, we're set for a long time in aquatics. We have three sheets of ice. We're strategic about when we take one or two of those down based on demand and based on energy costs for those, so we have some of that flexibility. Quite a few years ago, we had in the CIP the thought, and we will likely bring this back in a couple of years, the thought of what way, when we shut that sheet of ice down, if we do it longer than just a few months period of time, what if that had more of a portable court or a portable surface so that this time of year potentially you could practice indoor? So almost like a mini fieldhouse to that when it is in ice. And so to make good use, if we can't use them 100% of the time for ice, how can we best use them during those other times? So I really think in a lot of cases, it's strategies and it's working with some of the policies and the groups that we have. The one scenario that we proposed in the last CIP is an indoor racket scenario over at Miller Park where we have a couple of tennis courts that are ended their lifespan, basically right at the end of their lifespan, that to move forward with having an indoor opportunity to make tennis, badminton, pickleball available, affordable on a year-round basis, and especially in the winter, that we were recommending that that would be successful and is a need. Outside of that, it's really kind of incrementally doing some things as we monitor those trend lines.
Great, thank you. Council, any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate the update. I know that we've questioned this through the years and welcome, and I don't know how long you've been here, but nice to have you, and I guess actually since kindergarten or something.
I don't know if you want the whole story, but thank you for having me out tonight.
Absolutely. Mr. Getto, I think that's the end of our agenda. Is there anything else that you know of to come before the council?
Mayor, there is not, nothing further.
Okay, council, anything else? I did want to just take a, I don't know, what do I call it, a point of order or a...
Point of privilege?
Yeah, point of privilege or something, whatever that is.
I'm not sure.
And say something, I want to recognize the people outside the window. And I want to actually thank you for being here. I'm a great believer in democracy and in people's ability to be an activist and get involved, so I commend you. I want to just throw out to all of you, the idea that everyone up here has also probably 10 to 15 to 20 years of activism. I know that there's probably 20 to 30 years of commission work that we have cumulatively as a council, and I think there's 45 years of city council work on this council. So we love our city. I want to tell you, I can't speak exactly for every council member, but in my chats with them, we love the Miller Spring. And we will do nothing ever to impact negatively our creeks, our lakes, our Miller Spring. And that doesn't mean we won't vote for this project. That's out, you know, that we're considering doing due diligence through the next month, studying it carefully, but we care, I'm not saying that you don't, we care as much and even more than you because we love this city and we love our Miller Springs. So thank you for being here. Continue to reach out to us if you wish. I appreciate personally the activism and involvement. I think it makes democracy strong in our country. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
No move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Norrion?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Toomey?
Aye.
Mayor Case?
Aye. This meeting is adjourned.